Establish.
I like to call and order the special meeting, the board selection for Thursday, January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four. Time is now four oh four P M. Like to take on the call or the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have handouts. They're always hard to make sure I got the right ones because we have to print them on both sides. It's kind of a mandatory thing now in the board of selection. Right, Brian?
That's what I do.
I don't like wasting.
I don't either. I'm all.
I watch.
Appreciate. Well, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you for being here.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, Sue Shayner is, uh, I guess I would say the principal of Sage lead.
Sorry, we have no course fund.
Oh, thank you very much. Of course not. None. Sage leaders strategies.
Yes.
Um, I, I had met, um, Sue's kind of like on accident. She was here with some resident stuff and we got to talk and found out she had done um, executive leadership training and a world cafe type of, um, I would say presentations. And at the time I was very interested in doing something to the effect of a maybe a leadership summit in town or something of a strategic plan to find out really what people in town are thinking. And when I say people in town, groups like leaders, uh, faith leaders, educators, politicians, developers, even students, different groups. And so many of the things that we've done before now have focused very much on development. So we've got the plan of conservation development. We had the Bethel Forward Plan, things like that. So I wanted to find something that was a little more of a thirty thousand foot view and kind of address everything because I wanted to get more of a picture too. You know, when, you know, are people worried about, again, communication in town? Are they worried about? Yes, the, the quaintness of downtown, the economic development, not just conservation. Uh, are there social issues that we're thinking of? Yeah, we've had reports of the kids feeling more isolated or not safe downtown. Um, so that was kind of what drove this thing. And, and I knew very clearly, you know, we weren't going to do something to the level of like we've done with some of these where their hundred thousand dollar plans and they're, you know, that we vote on them as a town and have these big, big charades and all that sort of stuff. But I wanted something that really kind of was all encompassing. So with that, we've had conversations up to this point and, um, I yeah, as we talked last time, I wanted her to come and actually talk a little bit about what we could expect from something like this. So with that, thank you for being here, Susan.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it. I hope the introduction was enough. I know you might want to tell us more about yourself and your presentation, but it's all yours now.
Sure. And actually, we first met in April and then we started dialoguing on this in May.
Okay.
And then I originally submitted a formal proposal in August. I mean, just, just for the official record.
Been awhile.
Yeah. And, and so then based upon our conversations and budgets and whatnot, we made a modification, which I just wanted, proposal I'm taking you through today to reflect that. So, so this is, you know, update from six months ago. So in any case, um, so, yes, I can just share with you first and foremost, um, my understanding is, is that this would be inputs to a strategic plan. And so really what you're looking at is getting some town dialogue with the different constituent groups, um, in a way that, um, fosters an open generation of ideas. And so, um, in case you're not familiar with what a world cafe, it's a particular methodology that is geared towards working with, um, large groups and groups of people. It's called a cafe because it sort of simulates a cafe environment where you have, you might have, you know, five to eight people at a table and multiple tables and each table has different um, questions. So these are questions for folks to dialogue on and and it's all structured and timed and there's, you know, a setup and ground rules to get everybody situated so they understand. And then effectively what happens is, is that, and, and there's a recorder at each table, somebody to take notes. And, and then they start the dialogue with the question of that table and they start generating ideas. And then the time's up and they go to the next table and there's another list of questions. So the group travels from table to table to topic. So it's a way in a very short period of time to get a lot of information out and it doesn't end there. Then we step back and we look at all of the questions as a aggregated group, if you will, and, um, and then we, we look at a way to sort of prioritize, knowing that this would be a heterogeneous group and there's going to be different puts and takes on it. But what we end up with is um, not only a list of ideas, but an aggregation of those ideas and some themes as well as prioritized. Um, and then and then what, what we extract from that is my partner, Kara Coniker, and I, um, who would be the co-facilitator of this with me, somebody on my team, um, would then, you know, generate a report which would recap for you, what was the purpose, goals and objectives of doing this in the first place? Um, what, what was the methodology we use? What were some of the high level themes? How were they prioritized? And what would our recommendations be in terms of next steps? And so for you all, as a leadership team for the town, this would be inputs for, so you're, you're thinking for a strategic plan and kind of what you're getting is the voice of the citizenry, if you will, and also knowing that there's different constituent groups. So that's at high level in a nutshell. I mean, I'm happy to walk you through page by page, but I want to pause here and see any questions for me so far.
How do we limit? Do we come up with the scope of questions? Because, you know, my fear is you have forty people in a room, forty people are going to have their own ideas and it's not something where, so that comes from the first meeting. We say we're interested to know, um, how citizens feel we're communicating, maybe. You know, what better ways can we communicate with citizens? I mean.
Well, here's the thing. That's a great question, Brian. And here's the thing. So if you look on page two of the proposal, our recommendation is to start very, very broad and not to ask leading questions, to ask broad, open-ended questions. Because in our experience, people will take it where they want to and it needs to go. So if we just say, hey, what's working well in the town? Where do you feel like the town's falling short? What are the top concerns, you know? And, and if we have, let's say we have a group of, I don't know, you know, religious leaders, then we have a group of business owners, you know? Their perspectives are going to be somewhat different and we could look at, you know, color coding, who's saying what. Um, but our recommendation is to use the, this, keep it simple. This list of five questions and then pending upon what emerges, themes are going to emerge. So let's say they, the question is, you know, what's falling short? Where's the town weaknesses? People may say communications and we'll drill down and say, okay, let's get more specific. What do you mean by that? What are some of the things you're looking for? And so w- we want to leave it initially as open-ended as possible and then pending upon what comes up, we will poke at it a little bit and just try to get a level of specificity so that what you get back is a combination of some thoughts, concerns, high-level ideas and some, some specifics beyond that and maybe some very specific, you know, recommendations that people would like to see. The other thing is, is that, is that we can kind of pull out of all of this is, you know, you may have a list of, you know, a hundred ideas, but really the energy is in like fifteen of these ideas. And of those fifteen, there's five that there was very passionate discussion around. So like when we share the report with you, you know, Carol and I will also share, this was the tone and tenor of the conversations. And, you know, we noticed that there was a lot of debate here, but then there was really like unanimous feeling that this is absolutely something that town must address. So, so our job really is to serve as neutral third party and to help you kind of cut through everything and end up with things that are, give you both kind of levels of information, you know, some, some general ideas that you could work further and you may want to have some, you know, task forces that work something out more and some things that are very, very specific. So I know I, I said a lot more, but does that answer your question?
Yep. And how do you pick your sample group within those categories?
So that's a good question. So our job would be to give you some recommendations. The list that we have here in terms of categories and some specific, um, constituents within those categories, which is something that in dialogue with Dan, we just said, hey, it could look like this. This isn't a final list. So in other words, once you say, yep, go, this is a go. Then we would sit down with whoever's on the planning team and say, okay, this is the initial list. Does this make sense? And again, this proposal was modified because initially we were going to do like five different focus groups. Um, not in the budget. So we said, okay, we can collapse it. It's okay. It'll still be effective. And, um, we'd want to look at the numbers and just be very specific around that and make sure that we get kind of equal representation. So if we're talking about, um, let's say five tables, you know, we really don't want to have more than eight people at a table because you want to allow, you want to make sure that everybody has airtime and a voice. And so just doing the numbers, that's forty people. So then we would look at, and again, we brainstorm these four categories. Now, once we, we say, okay, these are the four categories or maybe we have to have a fifth category. And if in that case, it's like eight, you know, so you want it to be somewhat equal representation.
Right. I understand that.
Okay.
I guess what I'm saying is, is how do you pick the sample participants? So it's not skewed. Like if you asked me to find four people, I'd probably find four people who are like, might be thinking to me just because of the people that I talked to all the time.
Right. So, so.
We, do you, do you handle sending out the invites or do we have to give you a list? Like, or do you contact the local?
I think we'll work together for a list.
Work together for a list. Like we'll give you some guidance, but one of the things, what you're talking about, Brian, is getting clear criteria as to, so we, we will give you guidance and clear criteria. But at the end of the day, it's your decision in terms of, but whatever the criteria is by each constituent group is to make sure that that's clearly communicated. So people feel that this is, you know, a fair and equitable process. And also to communicate to the town, these are the folks that are, first, it's an invitation. So, and then people have to accept, yes, I'm, I'm willing to come and participate. And then it's letting the town know. For example, you know, on behalf of nonprofit leaders or service providers, these are the people that are going to be in this interactive forum. And if, and if, you know, if you're not one of them and you have a question concern, then reach out to one of these people and let them know so they can be the voice on your behalf. So does that help with that?
Yeah, it's, it's on the select and open survey to just say, hey, come on in every pit. Cause that, that ends up skewing the result.
I, that's what my question, we go to, you know, the general public to come in and you know, I'm kind of familiar with Dan and I were at one for the school and it was the same criteria that you're explaining to how it works.
Well, and Richard, there's.
Forget how that.
Well, we were all invited based on our.
About with the selectors office. So that's why, why we were invited, but.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. Were there, I'm, I'm sorry. Were there any other people?
Yeah, there were, there were faith leaders, right? Cause then they had a number of like the pastor, Ryan, and the people were there. Um, they had people in the politics, they had people in the P T O. Right? They had, then they had, um, the kids, of course. So if you looked at each table, they were broken down more by like what relationship they had to the schools and the kids in schools. But it was invitation based on that, not like just someone open invite for the twenty percent of people who always want to come on.
Yeah.
But should I understand that's, we don't want that necessarily. We really do want people in the community who are leading groups and things like that and get their honest feedback. People who don't always participate either.
Yeah, that's the other thing to consider. And so what I wanted to say, Rich, and I didn't mean to talk over you. And what I wanted to say is, um, that from that experience, the world cafes and that experience, any of your learnings, you know, having gone through that, that you want to bring to this situation as well as obviously what you're going to get is in our experience, this is what works best. So the planning of this is really me and my team, me and Carol, really working with you in a collaborative fashion to see what is going to work best here in this context. And then in this community, obviously we have experienced doing this with lots of different kinds of organizations and communities. Um, the other thing I wanted to address, Brian, your question was around, um, who communicates this? Who sends out the communication? Our recommendation, you know, is that it comes from the town um, to say, you know, this is what we're doing and here's why. And I'm happy to, um, give advice and put feedback on that communication. And so to, you know, our job really is facilitate the town's process. And when we give you our recommendations, it's going to be based upon what did we hear? And in our experience and our expertise is in leadership organizational development. Um, and and we do have experience working with senior leadership teams in, um, helping them align on strategy execution, assuming they already have a strategy in place. So, so we're coming to all of this through that kind of lens. So learning, leadership, organizational development. Um, so I just kind of spoke to it generally. I mean, I didn't go page by page, but, um, you know, you see there this initial background, um, what we believe about strategy. And I do want to point out something here is that, you know, strategy is a word that's thrown around a lot and, um, a lot of people use the word strategy when they're really talking about tactics. What are we actually going to do? But strategy is really about, um, a future orientation on where are we going? What is, and how, how far out are we planning for? And, and you know, how are we going to get there? The, the how and the, the execution on the strategy is all the tactics and all the things that you need to do to realize the strategy. So so even though you're going to come out, we'll come out of this with a lot of ideas and inputs. And then you have to, you know, as a team, have to do another level of analysis on feasibility, you know, and resources and budgets, you know, and all of that with the puts and takes on it. But what you're going to have is this is the voice of your citizenry. And their, their thoughts, questions, concerns, and where they have the most energy, you know? So that's like a litmus test for you. It's like, you know, there's really a lot of pent up, you know, like we had to like stop it. Sometimes we have to like do referee, wait a minute, you know? And sometimes it's like, yeah, we could do this. We could do that. I don't really have a lot of energy around that. And that's the kind of thing that we'll, we'll share with you as well. Um, so, so we're not, um, we don't come in as consultants. I'm going to use like a dramatic example, like a Mackenzie and say, this is what your strategy should be. That's not what this is about. This is us facilitating a dialogue to get people talking in a collaborative, constructive way, knowing that you know, there's people in town who have very strong voices and people who might get into conflict around their ideas. I mean, we just want to get the collective with some nuance there. Um, trying to think what else, what else can I answer for you? I mean, you see our bios in there. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about my background or Carol's background. Carol and I have known each other for who's counting, uh, twenty-three years. We originally worked together at IBM. Um, and in there we were both part of a internal group of consultants targeted to the top three hundred leaders of, of IBM. Um, and focused on leadership and organizational development. And since that time, um, you know, we've gone on to do different things. I have been running Sage for eighteen years and Carol's been working with me in a consulting capacity for the last several years. And so we've done a number of engagements together through Sage.
I just mentioned, yeah, they're just looking at your schedule, that, you know, budget season.
We're in budget season. Well, the good news is it doesn't take one out of us so much.
Yeah. Oh, no, not us. Just the time for the meetings.
It is. And it's, um, I mean, right now we're looking in March where most of that budget stuff is kind of quiet.
Right. Back, back.
Cause we're, we're done. We have like our, our meetings for February sixth, February eighth. Then we have one other if needed. Well, we have thirteenth, rather, Board of Education. And then we're, we have our deliberation meeting, which is just following that. Then it's pretty quiet for March for us.
We'll have to work it.
In the, yeah. And then April, April second is the primary, April fourth is the town meeting and the referendum is April twenty-third. So March does work to kind of be early enough in the year to do something with it. Um, I understand your concern, Brian, too, because I, I don't want to put something out there that's just like a bright session of usual people who turn out.
Yeah.
Like, but that's why this is, this is somewhat selective in a sense that we're trying to find community leaders who are connected to other people. It may not be the ones who are always participating in our local meetings or doing things, but they've got a real pulse on the community. And, you know, I, yes, I'm sure we're going to hear about development in town because that's an issue. We're going to hear about probably communication in town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm really wondering if there are other things are correct. Park and park. Yeah, uh, uh, programs.
Yeah, programs.
And maybe, maybe what kind of programs?
And facilities.
Yeah. But I mean, I, I think that, listen, we know a lot. I think from what people come to us and say complaints and that, but I think some things pop up that we don't know. And I think anytime we're at least looking to our citizens or residents to say, hey, we want to know what you're thinking, it doesn't hurt us. Um.
Wait, you're, you're raising a couple of interesting points. Um, the first one is we want to start broad asking questions. And if there's things that you know are hot buttons or you typically hear complaints about, or somebody has a bugaboo about whatever, you can plant that in our ear. And if we don't hear about it, we could always probe and try and bring it out of people. And if we hear about it and there's a way in which you want us to, um, get curious about it and ask questions and probe a little bit more, we can do that, you know, just for us as facilitators to kind of have that, you know, context in the background so that we know where and when to kind of, you know, get probe a little bit more.
Sure.
Um, the other thing you mentioned in terms of this timeline, um, which I modified since we talked about last time and, and the initial, initial intent of doing this is early in the year as possible, given all of your other scheduling and everything and making sure that we get the, the right people in the room to be determined is so that you do have the inputs earlier enough in the year because once we have this information in, and we present it to you, um, then you're going to need to do the next level of work and have the kind of conversation to say, you know, of these fifteen items, let's prioritize to still down and then put together, you know, your high level document around what do you actually want the strategy to be and what would the action steps and tactics be under that? But because what comes out of this is um, it's highly unlikely that you're going to be able to do everything that everybody wants you to do, as you know. Right? Cause, cause you have information, you have your perspective and priorities and you're factoring in the voice of the citizenry into that.
I mean, I, I like that. I guess it, because as a legislative body, as the legislative body for town, I feel like we need a little bit of a a direction and strategy when we're thinking of policies. Well, yeah.
I agree. Just, you know, it has to be measurable. Can't measure it. Doesn't really matter.
Right.
Yeah.
You're right.
So I, I think that's, and I'm not, I don't want you to think anything that I say is like against you or.
Yeah.
I just think with the key questions, you know, we should have some idea of where we're going. I mean, we know what some of the, the big topics are in town.
Sure we do.
Right? I mean, if you had forty people say, I'm on a golf course, I don't think that was a good study or I'm just being honest.
Yeah.
I don't think that's what we're, we're looking at. So I just think that we have to be careful and make sure that, you know, anytime you adopt a plan or a strategic, you know, and I use different terms than probably you do. I mean, first in corporate culture, I was first in, you know, police world.
Yes.
But anytime we came up with a strategy before a plan, we made sure it was measurable and able to be adjusted quickly if it wasn't working. So that's my only thing is I'm, I'm fine with, I, I love hearing people's opinions. I, I think, you know, part of this is a break place when we walk through how many opinions we get or whatever groves reached to bring, go to a town. I just, you know, want to make sure that, you know, the questions we ask elicit things that we can react, we can react to and, and actually focus on.
Well, yeah, we, when we, when we come up with our plan, I mean, assuming listen, some things we're going to know about and, and hopefully we have some ideas and some, you know, four or five, ten, fifteen things that we want to do. Um, you, to your point, we're going to have to find things that we decide there's a measurable outcome. Like when we do our plan, we should have, you know, it's like SMARTboard, right? Or we should have something there.
Sure. But in the beginning, you're, you're, uh, fronting the, the questions. You're going to put the questions before the, the Pam.
Yeah, I want to make a distinction. Yes.
You know, your recommendations here, they might, this might vary, you know, the weaknesses of now, things like that.
Yes.
To Brian's point, and the weakness of the town, then it comes up, oh, we, we need a golf course. You know, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
I don't think that's the issue anymore, but.
No, I.
Well, I want to make a distinction between what is the purpose of this and your goal and objective of creating a strategic plan that you draw, you as a leadership team drive and all, okay? This is inputs to that. So yes, if forty people say I want a golf course, your job is to say, we heard you and we can't do it now. And here's why. So this is, this is inputs. And so I would say the, it's your, is what you just said, Dan. So, so it's really your job as a leadership team to sift through these ideas and, and come up with and happy to give you some ideas around process for that, or you have, might have your own process, um, to discern what, which ideas, what's the criteria by which, how you decide which ideas are viable and why. So that when you communicate back to the town, you say, here's what happened. Great interactive forum. Here's what we heard. A lot of great ideas, a lot of great dialogue. A lot of people really listening to each other and, and we heard you. And here are the things that we are going to pull forward and why. And here are the things that we can't, we can't do now, you know, and why. So the measurable piece is when you create your plan, this is really a brainstorming activity. Is that, does that make sense? So I, I want to, did I address your question concern, Brian?
I understand.
I, I don't think we're going to end up with something like forty people into golf course or something that's, I think we're ending up with some good stuff and and, and here's something like anecdotally, I was at a, um, was basically the cultural alliance of Western Connecticut on Sunday and they had this, I'll call it a little competition. They had three groups put together. They were competing for, there, there were maybe eight or so people in each team and they were coming up with a plan that would, uh, be beneficial to the area of Danbury and that they would get ten, a ten thousand dollar budget to do what they needed to do and all sorts of stuff. One of the things that I found that was very interesting about all of them, um, all, all the, all the teams came back with something that focused on connectivity to the town. And, and at least two of the three came up with what I would call looking for third spaces. A third space meaning looking for spaces in the community that were not home, were not work, like places people could go. And I, and I don't know if that's driven post pandemic. I don't know like what that is, but they were talking about things like out in, um, you know, parks and the different parts of the town. So I found it very interesting that that was such a common theme. So with something like this, I'm also interested in what are the most important things people are really looking for? We know development is a shame for everybody. We know connectivity to the town is an issue for everybody, for each other. Um, there's going to be a couple of things that safety is going to be the issue. We would have traffic, like those are going to come up. Then we may find some things that are like really hot buttons because some of those we're working on already. And as a team, I think we made priorities because we, like we just got the grant downtown. We are going to have to be weighing in on this parking mobility study and what do we do about it? Like, there's all these things coming at us that I think this piece is important to have that extra information going into it. That's, that's why I was willing to do it and you know, not, not do it as, like do it as our group, as a legislative body, not saying that, you know, we're, we're having this big thing. We're doing this big development plan in town, all the other things. It's really about where do we go? You know, kind of as a leadership team to the town. Um, but I don't know what, I don't know what we'll hear. Like I know some of those things are coming because I've, I've been hearing them. I don't, I don't know why. I didn't get a chance to dig into why those were so important, but third spaces are a big thing right now. I call them third spaces. Um, people want connectivity, they want to, but they want to go somewhere. Sometimes they want a park and they want something special. Like, but all these different things will on. Uh, our, our water, um, garden over McCowherd is a huge deal. People love it. Wouldn't have ever thought like, but that's something people go to and they hang. Um, so maybe some of that will come out. Anyway, that's, I don't want to say too much there.
Well, that's a good example. So like if safety comes out, that's such a broad category. Well, that's a good example. So like if safety comes out, that's such a broad category. So we wouldn't just leave it at that. We'd say, okay, what do you mean by safety? Give us some examples, you know? What, what works about safety? What doesn't work about safety? What would you like to see? So we're, we're gonna drill down so we can get you some information that you can. A, understand what do people really mean by this and B, how you could potentially action. Cause at the end of the day, this is information that you wanna create some action around. I'm curious, given the education cafes that you just experienced. And also the Culture Alliance, I, I wasn't able to be there. I'm gonna have to go to the next one.
Oh, you, you know about that, okay.
Uh, yeah, because I'm on the board.
Oh.
Um, of the Culture Alliance. Um, so I'm curious, just given those two experiences for lustrous purposes. What were some of the things that you thought, oh, wow, that was really interesting that came out of that, that could be applicable here? Learnings or interesting insights?
Well, I had, also, the, the, the kids were afraid to come down town Bethel to walk the streets.
Oh.
You know, that's a shocking repertivation to me.
Yeah, there, yeah, it was. And there were, there were two parts of that. I mean. For some, there was all political turmoil in the world. And, and they were like, oh, you know, people may not like us or we are or whatever, and you know, that part. Some were like physical places, there's not places to go. Bus stops, lighting. I mean, there were, right, there were all these different pieces to it. So I don't necessarily know they ferreted out really why that was an issue. But it was an issue. And it was one of the things I would have brought up right now, just now, I would have brought up.
Interesting. Okay.
And the, um, the other part of it, I think there's a. Part of it, I think they feel, and this is my theory, there's a disconnect between what they are, where they're in right now in society in the sense that. The schools do a very good job of character education. You know, like I got, like in middle school, it's war, respect, some, you know, they have like, they have. They have character education, what they're doing. And they don't see anybody with character on the outside right now. You know, they're getting bombarded by media and crazy stuff going on. So I think in their, in their heads, that's part of it too, perhaps. But I think, um, the thing that jumped out at me though. Is they just didn't feel connected to town. They felt like they were in their world. And then Bethel was over here.
Didn't care about.
Town didn't care about, yeah, town didn't care about them. Didn't matter.
My position at the time was that we do care about you.
Yeah.
You know, all, all the feedback you get from whatever, you know, and this is a good example of the feedbacks for the boards.
Yeah, yeah. So, so really drilling down on, well. Why do they feel that way? What's going on? What's, what's their perspective? Because if they say we don't feel connected to town. You could make assumptions about why that is and then plan some solutions that may not. Get to the root cause and actually solve the problem for them to feel more connected.
Yeah.
So we'd wanna try and get, I'm using that for lustrous purposes. Those, those are good examples because we wanna try and get as much information. Below the headline as we can get.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments?
Now I noticed with respect to, I mean, on, on the piece, we, it was, it was ten thousand dollars plus travel material with a thirty-five discount. From the travel material.
No, the thirty-five percent discount is on our fee.
That was the fee. There was thirty-five discount.
No, the fee was originally, no, this is a.
Original fee was twenty-seven.
Right. And, and even modifying this for what our daily rate is, would normally be fifteen thousand.
I see what you're saying.
But you said your cap is ten. So I said, we will do this for ten because I love my town.
Thank you. I know, I know it's good. Uh, on another note. Um, it was, uh, it was Sue Sheiner who put together the drum circles, which are quarterly.
Yes.
And they're awesome. I went to one, it was pretty cool. Thank you for doing that for the community.
Thanks for official Dan Cameron's garbage can. It was great.
I did, I did with a garbage can, bang on a garbage, I didn't know what to do. I'd never done it before. And at first I thought it was, it was a little hokey. I was like, okay, um, this is weird. And then I got into it. I'm like, wow, this is really therapeutic. It was cathartic. Everybody was having a ball and they were all from different walks.
Yeah.
It was very, very cool. I see why they use it for therapy now. You know, drunk therapy, addiction, all kinds of different.
Yes. Yes. And so, and so by training way back when, I'm actually a trained expressive arts therapist. Um, that's one of my, one of my master's degrees is it. And, and, and so using the arts, whether it's dance, music, drama. Is incredibly healing. And also, we wanna do this in town. With no fee, we just ask for a donation because it pays for the rec center, um, to bring the town together. You know, in a time where there's a lot of division and it's just fun. And so I like to say, and you were there at the first one, Dan, so you know. We had people in strollers and walkers, so all ages. So it's cool. Um, and so when I say travel and material expenses, that's, you know, like standard, the way that we write up our contracts. And I live here in town, so that's nothing. Carol lives in Stanford. I will probably just cover that. That's no big deal. And material expenses, we will let you know what we need by way of flip charts and whatever. And if the town has some and we can just use those, I'm all for.
You spoke about that. I mean, we have access to things like that for our, our first selection account and everything.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I think the next question for us is, um. Do we want to schedule another discussion or are you guys pretty much comfortable moving forward? I just wanna make sure you're comfortable moving forward, cause I'd like to. Okay. Um, so with that, thank you for the presentation. Um. I've moved that we, um. I moved that we funded the strategic planning workshop as presented. Uh, for the town of Bethel from ARPA funds in the amount, not to receive ten thousand dollars. Any further discussion?
I, I think, uh, using our phones is good, is for the whole community and that's what they're.
That's what we're for.
And I, I agree with it.
Well, with that then, um, I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? See none? Motion passes. I accept a motion to return. Again, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, thank you, guys.